We're very pleased tonight to have in attendance members of the Cummins Engine Foundation, T. Randall Tucker, Richard Stoner, Dick Joseph, and Mr. and Mrs. Miller. The reason why we requested Mr. and Mrs., or Mr. Miller and Mr. Stoner to meet with us is to explain the architectural policy of the foundation, not only for the benefit of the three new members, but as a review to the older board members and to the community. We are very concerned with the need for additional space in the Taylor'sville School. We just recently appointed a committee of three administrators, three teachers, and three parents to study the three alternatives for the Taylor'sville School. We can add to the present structure, we can add to the newer part of the structure and tear down the old part, or we can build a new school on the rear acreage and then tear down as, after completion, tear down the total structure as it stands. So, can we ask Mr. Stoner to explain the policy?
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry. Would you take a seat here, sir? Sir, could I introduce the board members to you? This is Robert Frankie, Dr. Edmond Darvich, Dr. Abel, Dr. Vickers, Alan Murgren, Harold Perry, and I'm Jesse.
Well, we're delighted to be with you tonight, and I think that each time a school board has asked us to come, we've made it clear at the beginning that this is not a program that we urge ourselves, it's one that's available. And the final judgment always whether to accept it or not is out of the board, because they have their responsibility for providing quality education in the community and deciding how to do that. Of course, Cummins is concerned of their enormous amount of claims on its contributions, both in this city and others. And we'll put the money to good use maybe here or somewhere else. But I just wanted to make that explanation to the start, because if I described our interest in the program and why we think it's worth offering, I wouldn't want you to think I'm trying to sell anything, because that's just one point of view of one group of citizens. I think from our point of view, it's better to start back a little bit and say, why do we think it's a good thing to do at all? Over the past 20 years, we have put two and a quarter million dollars in this. We're publicly own concern, and if you take two and a quarter million dollars a share of owner's money and put it in a school system, you better have very good reasons for that. Now, our reasons goes back to our basic objects as a company. We compete on a worldwide basis nowadays with very formidable competitors, the best in the world. And our headquarters is here in Columbus. The only way you can compete is not with dollars, if you do that, general owners will beat you every time. You compete with people. And we are able to compete very successfully and to have the kind of a growth that we get simply because of the quality of people that we have in the company. And as we grow, we have a great struggle to find more and more competent management. And we search the world over for these. Now, the kind of people that we are looking for are the kind that everybody in every corporation is looking for. And the first thing you run up against is that these people can't choose where to live and work, because everybody wants them. These are highly motivated, usually younger couples with children. And the one consideration that always comes up as we try to build a company and its management team is volume of education in the city. The big question is, if I move to Columbus, will my children have access to as high a quality of education to prepare them for life as they could get in any other community in the nation, or any of the other places where we have a chance to work? And that explains the basic reason for our interest, and it's a very strong one, in the school system. If we're to remain and keep our headquarters in Columbus, it has to be in a community that among other things offers as fine education as you can find for young families, because we can't hold and recruit a management team over a period of years if Columbus is not in all respects an outstanding community, especially so in respect to education. Now, another interest that we have, we're a taxpayer in this community. And as a matter of fact, we are paying increasing share of taxes here. In 1965, Columbus paid 23% of the taxes, and in 1972, it paid 31% of the taxes. And in 1973, it'll pay more than that when the Walesburg Plan comes on. So not only do we pay a substantial amount of money out in Texas, but we are paying an increasing share, and the other tax holders are paying a decreasing share. So we have a concern about taxes. It is a big item in our bill. And as we have studied the problem now for more than 20 years, we have found the single biggest item affecting the cost of government and taxes turns out to be inflation, which you probably well know. Over the last 20 years, the cost of building a, the same structure has approximately tripled in 20 years. And it's interesting to see how that, how these construction costs are growing. The average rate of increase in building construction for the past 20 years is 5% per year. For the last 10 years, it's 6.9% a year. For the last five years, it's 9.9% a year, and last year it went up 17% in one year. So the cost of delay is becoming extremely, increasingly expensive. Any study of the last 25 years will say that the way to lower taxes is to build it sooner and to build it bigger, every time. There isn't a structure that we built as a company, or we've seen the city build, that our taxes wouldn't be lower if we built it a little sooner and built it a little bigger. Almost all of the facilities that were left out would now cost twice as much. Our technical center, that was built only in 1964, would be almost out of reach for the company now. Costs $35 a square foot then, the same building will cost over $100 a square foot now. So, as a taxpayer, we are interested in an aggressive school building program that meets the needs promptly, meets them fully, and meets them in a way that'll last. Clearly, the best building that's ever been built in this town is the Courthouse. You can imagine this tiny population over 100 years ago, having the nerve to build a building big enough to serve this community for 100 years. That is probably the most adventurous, far sighted investment that this community ever made, and we are all beneficiaries of the fact that they thought big and they planned for 100 years, and not just for something that would last in their lifetime. We would have probably spent 10 times as much for five courthouses, if they'd only built a courthouse big enough just to serve their own needs. It's, there are not many counties in the state that can point to a population that far sighted. So, as taxpayers also, we are interested therefore, not in the total amount of taxes paid, but in the fact, are we getting our money's worth for the dollar? That is what counts. And that means, does it really provide the services? Does it provide them at the necessary quality, and is it at a fair cost? So you'll find in your work that if you're keeping ahead of the problem, Cummins will support you. And we'll speak on your behalf, because we think this is the way to serve the community well and to keep taxes down over the long period of time. Now, why interested in school buildings apart from this factor of inflation and cost rate? Well, buildings are only part of a top-notch school system, and we know that. The curriculum, the administration, and above all, the teachers are what really makes a school. But a teacher can be impeded by a school building that won't work, or it can be helped by surrounding set. So we need to make learning a pleasure and an excitement for a kid, because the experience that a child gets in his first days at school affects his whole attitude toward learning the rest of his life. And if to him that has been an exciting and pleasant experience, then he is more apt to be a learner as long as he lives. We think that outstanding facilities, we've heard helps to attract the best teachers and make Columbus a preferred place to come to, and it certainly helps the industries in Columbus attract the kind of management that they, they want. So it was with this background in mind that we laid out the program. Now, Dick has some copies of, I think, one of the first letters that we wrote about 12 years ago, and I thought I'd just take you through a couple of pages of it, because in a sense, in essence, this is what the program still is. We start at the bottom. The program which comes off is...
Let's turn to the third page of yours.
Yeah. We start at the bottom of here of this. The proposal is to contribute to the school board the amount of the architects on each new building, provided one that the architect selected for each new building be one not previously chosen. We thought it was better to have many solutions rather than just the benefit of one model. Second, we thought that the best buildings will come from placing at the disposal of the school board and the school administration, the very best minds in building that there are in the country. So, second item was that the architect be selected by the school board from a panel of at least six first rank American architects, prepared and submitted by this interested panel. And new lists have been submitted each time. Now, we, we proposed that for this reason, that we wanted to remove ourselves completely from any decisions. We do not take, we think it's important that the whole responsibility be in the hands of the school board. So we have never named an architect to this list. We picked two people who are senior architects, who name the panel. We have never interviewed them, we have never looked at plans, we've never looked at proposals. The selection of the architect is entirely up to the school board, and Cummins neither knows who they will be nor talks to them. And we think this is important to emphasize that the sole, that the total responsibility remains with the board. Third, the architect ought to have the responsibility for a total design. And that is designing the building, recommending landscape, locating on the site, and recommending all interior furnishings so that the building, as it finally is determined by the board, the administration, and the architect serves the total needs of the children. Third, the architect, or number four, the architect should have the responsibility for designing outside areas as part of the total concept under the Park School Cooperative Plan. Item number five, additions to existing buildings be designed by the architect who designed the original building, and fee for this handled in the normal manner, not covered by these. Item number six, the architect be required by the board, as would normally be the case, to work within the total budget determined and agreed upon by the board. I think that over the period of years of this program, the school board and administration have performed absolutely outstanding. They have worked very aggressively with architects to make sure that the building A served the purpose and B came within the budget. And my experience in building and working with architects is that the client is equally responsible with the architect for a good building, and it's hard to have a good building unless each of them work very hard and are totally frank with each other. And this board, I think, has had an outstanding record of being a model client, and that is working aggressively with the architect to hold a purpose and stay within the budget. And in that sense, it's better than most, any board that I know of. It's been a very constructive relationship. Item number seven, I think is a very important one, and that is, architect chosen, should be chosen sufficiently in advance to give him a period of at least 12 months' time within which to plan, design, and make working drawings. The real way to make mistakes in a building, in our experience, is to rush the planning in the conceptual stage. It doesn't cost very much to tear up a sheet of paper and make a new design and do it over. It costs an awful lot to tear down a wall or over a building if it isn't right. So I couldn't, no matter whether you accept this program or some other, I would urge you as a person that's built over a good many years, never short circuit the planning time. Always take plenty of time to do that, bearing in mind that you can make changes then and that you can't make later. Item number eight, the exercise a standard AIA contract. Item number nine, I think, has now been changed because the AIA reimbursement for expenses and the fee schedule has been raised since 1961. And our recommendation is that they be paid on, and our contribution program is based on paying them on the current authorized rates which all architects charge. On this final page, back in 1961, it said that our feeling was that such a plan would not increase the cost of new buildings, might reduce them. I believe the actual results over 20 years have been that these buildings have come in about on the average of Indiana school buildings, on an adjusted square foot or a pupil basis. There have been some variations, some invented, relatively inexpensive and some expensive. I think Lincoln and Jefferson are the two most expensive. Jefferson was not in the program, Lincoln was. But Lincoln was a small school in a very congested area. On the other hand, I understand some of your new buildings on an adjusted area are some of the lowest cost that have been built. We feel that, we felt that the quality of the buildings and the quality of the design might mean that they would be useful school buildings probably one generation longer than would be the case if they were either less well-built or less well-planned. Any of the architects that I've talked to after a building experience in Columbus is very high in praise of their contact with the teachers, administrators, and the board, and the creative thinking that they received there. I think the result of that is that these buildings are going to last as useful schools a great many years longer than if the same quality of work hadn't gone in.
I've felt very fortunate in being able to work in the board over the last three years and learn more about education here in our school district. And I think we're all aware of some of the hassles that have gone on in the school board elections and some of the issues. I think, I think one of the most basic questions that we all have to ask is, what should education be doing these days? What should our philosophy of education be? And we can probably each state it in very general terms and be safe, but when we try to get specific, it gives us a great deal of trouble. And then we were all concerned back a year ago, when the Ford Foundation itself issued some findings that really called into question some of the newer concepts of education in this country, and some of the newer concepts that our corporations put in. What I'm trying to say is, I think we, to know really what we need at a school building here, we need to look even deeper than we've ever looked before, to know what should education be doing in this day and age. And when we get as good a handle on that question as we can, then we need to approach the problem, you know, how do we do these things that we need to be doing? And what I'm asking, what I'd like to see, I think the school board needs help in even more basic areas than designing an excellent building in Taylor'sville. I wonder if you would have some ideas or suggestions or be willing to work with us in getting answers to these?
Well, we certainly would, and I believe on several occasions, we've either helped to fund either curriculum studies or other investigations or analyses which the board and the administration has wanted to do. And I think you are quite right that we're in a period in which effective education is being constantly redefined. Of, of course, I'm not a professional. The only thing, only things I could make is to be that I watch, we use a lot of people who've gone to Columbus schools and others, and you watch them, and if you had to, if I had to state two desirable results of education, I, I have stated them in my own terms and not in terms of the professional. One of them is that I would like to see boys and girls come out who really thought well of themselves and had confidence in themselves. And second, boys and girls who had had an exciting experience of learning and wanted to keep on learning all the rest of their lives. And then third, boys and girls who had a real concern for the people around, and especially people who might not be as favored as they were. Now, if education can produce that, then a person goes on educating himself or herself all his life. It isn't just in the first eight grades or through high school. That is just sort of the launching pad. And if that launching experience gives a person self-confidence and a taste for learning, then he or she is going to be not only a happy individual, but a very effective citizen in a society. And in the long run, I'm not so concerned about secretarial skills or speed of typing or whether you can run a machine tool or not. The real thing that counts to us as an employer is what kind of character these people have and how much fun they have living and how, and how great their commitment is both to the company and their community. And it's in those terms that I think we're going to have to judge whether education is good or bad. And I see many cases where there are tragic casualties in education, ground up in the system, or they come out with false values, or they have a really unhappy learning experience. And therefore, they either stop growing or stop learning. And I think that this system has clearly put together some very outstanding teachers. All of my kids have gone through all the grade school and a good deal of the high school, and so did I. And I would say that the school system clearly is getting steadily better, and it certainly is a great deal better than it was when I went to school, by a large quantity. But I know that's hard to hold on to. It's easy to lose ground, and it's very hard to get it back. But as an employer, we aren't looking for skills. We're looking for mature, well-adjusted, happy, productive human beings, because we can give them specific skills. And we're not looking for, I mean, if this public school system could accomplish that, I, I just don't see how it could be.
Now, Mr. Miller, you're saying that you would prefer to have happy, well-adjusted people than to have people that are trained in a...
No, you can train them. If they're confident, good learners, well, you can always train them. They'll absorb training right away. But a, but a person who has lost confidence in himself, no matter how many words a minute he can type, is a, is, is just, he's a limited, ineffective employee. The big problem in a business is to get people who can identify with the whole business, understand its purpose, and work for the accomplishment of the whole, not merely themselves. And this is more important than skills. You've got to have skills too, but any such person who has personal self-confidence, concern for others, and likes to learn can pick up skills in a very short period of time. It's really, I heard the other day, it's amazing how rapidly a graduate of Columbus High School can become an effective machine operator at a company, very short space of And probably this relates to his learning experience quite apart from shop, or in addition to shop. And we have the feeling that products of the Columbus school system are somewhat better than the products of surrounding school systems. And I think that's been accomplished pretty much in the last 20 or 25 years. I, I'm not so sure that the difference would have been as great, say, 30, 40 years ago. I think when I went to school, yes, we weren't all that different from Seymour and Shelbyville.
Now, Seymour is good in the states.
Well, I appreciate the chance to talk with you, and we'll be glad to respond on Taylor'sville if you'd like us to. And if you would tell us specifically what you have in mind, and then we'll talk to the people that select the panel and see if they think that outstanding architects would be interested in it. If they are one, we'll be glad to make the program available.
We will have a report, Mr. Miller, from the committee in the near future, and then when we find, you know, what they're recording...
Come to us, we'll be glad to go to work.
Fine. Appreciate very much your...
Thank you. ...response, but we're, if we're successful in helping people that we think are going to do the job, you'll begin to see that the overall quality of the Congress of the United States, or state legislature, or whatever, is improved simply because of the larger numbers of people coming in. We don't have any agenda of things that we think they should be dealing with. We're just saying that we know that if you put a good man in that spot, he'll be reelected because the people will know.
Do you, do you have any agenda of things that they shouldn't be dealing with? I mean, sometimes people can be a little bit too reform-minded, and are there some areas that you feel that, that these individuals that you would back would stay away from?
Uh, no, not really. I think that we are obviously very concerned about the economy, and we're hoping that the Congress of the United States will deal with that rather immediately and perhaps rather drastically. So we're, we were looking for people that perhaps didn't have their mind made up, but that had some idea and some understanding of what the issues were, because it seems to us that that's very basic and very fundamental, and if our economy fails, all the rest fails. So we were, we were conscious of that, but we didn't have strong views that either way that they should stay away from the economy, or they should stay away from wage price controls, or should be going one way or the other.
All right. What about, should they stay away from major increases in corporate taxes?
I, we really didn't get into that, and I doubt seriously that we ever will with them. We'll, we'll say that we've helped... We'll say that we've helped elect quality, competent people who we trust that will get down there, and when the facts are before them, will make the right decisions. And we are not so presumptive to think that we have many of the answers, but if you can get the right people, they'll come up with the right solution.
So, if one solution at this point in time were to, say, increase corporate taxes to the point where it might even be, oh, I suppose, harmful to the corporations, I mean, would you think these individuals would feel reluctant to do that since they received corporate funds?
They really didn't receive corporate funds as such, they received funds, in fact, that's a violation of law, but they received funds from a member of a corporation, an individual. And I would guess that what you, what you earn by a contribution, at least if you have an idea, you're likely to get a hearing. But I doubt that very seriously, that deliberations about whether to raise corporate taxes or not, that a $500 contribution would have very much influence.
And it's going to be that, that great...
It seems like a great deal of money, but I think the amount of money that you have to spend for campaigns is so great that...
Well, you've been around this process for a long time. What do you think would be the largest source of, they say the power corrupts, and many people believe that. What would you say would be the largest source of corruption in political figures? What corrupts them as individuals?
Well, I guess sort of, I used the word "power." I think what's happened, and perhaps Watergate is a classic example of the flagrant abuse of power, that sometimes it seems that the laws were made to accommodate the office holder rather than to protect his constituency. And I think that the carelessness and the abuses and sort of the self-serving, self-dealing approach, I've seen it happen time and time again. And there again, I think we get back to the point of accountability, as long as we, as we know what's happening. But Washington, in this case, is a long ways away, and how many people know what was going on? But I think if we've learned any lesson out of this, the Watergates of the nation, that we need to be a bit more concerned about what's going on, and I hope that that's been the message coming out.
Is there a problem of elitism, you think, with elected officials? Sometimes they talk about the Senate as being a very restricted club, the number of individuals who are elected to that position, there are only 100 of them. Do you feel that people sort of get a feeling that they're better than the individuals they represent?
Well, I think that that, probably, in some cases, that's true. It's like reading your own press clippings. You begin to feel that you're the anointed or appointed rather than elected, and I think it's a, it's a very easy thing to fall into, that somehow this system was devised so that I could hold this position rather than serve in this position. And I think it's a, it's a pitfall that obviously does happen. But generally, the kind of people that I have met in serving in public life are just really quality people, and that they're very, the majority of them are very, very alert to their constituents. We're, you know, we're very fortunate, this part of the state, we've got a very, in my opinion, a very responsive congressman. We've elected some new people at the local level, and I'm sure that the kind of people we're running, we're going to have good government. And I think that there are, they're the kind of people I'm trying to...
Yeah, what I hear you saying here is perhaps that maybe some people have a sort of stereotype image of a political figure that isn't quite accurate, that isn't quite fair, that there are a number of good people, hard-working people, who are trying to do things and solve problems, and, you know, who respect their constituency. But at the same time, then, there's another group of powerful individuals who don't respect it. Is there a division between, say, the legislative body and something like an executive branch, where you have a number of appointed officials who aren't directly responsible to a voter?
Well, I think the more responsible that you are, the more accountable you are if you have to run, that seems to me to be the best test and the best way in which to control it. Appointed officials, in many instances, don't have to account, but I think the check and the balance is still that if a governor appoints a particular cabinet member or a member of his administration, the administration is held accountable for the actions of that particular cabinet member. And the people still have an opportunity to say yes or no when the governor himself comes up for reelection. And that seems a rather diffused way in which to get at it. But I think, I think the system works. I think it has its problems. I think that there are people serving in public life that shouldn't be in public life, ranging from the kind of people that, on Adam Clayton Powell, to what we've now seen in Watergate. But I think they are the exception. But I hope that we are more vigilant, and the American people recognize that there's a great deal at stake, and these spots are, whether they be in the legislature or in Washington, are extremely important.
Can we go back just a moment to the campaign contributions? How much money are we talking about?
Their total amount that the Miller family gave this year to, to groups, some generally bipartisan, groups that are working in public policy matters, and to candidates all across the country in some 66 races, about $116,000. The largest single contribution was a $3,000 gift from Mr. Miller and a $3,000 contribution from his sister to a United States Senate candidate in Iowa, John Culver, who was elected. And there was a case of where, in our opinion, clearly the best man, and we felt we knew a little more about that race. But generally, the contributions ranged, in the range from $500 to $1,000 in some 66 races.
Are these campaigns sought, these contributions, I mean, are these contributions sought?
Generally, they are. Because of the, Erwin Miller's exposure in world events and so forth, that I guess he's on everyone's mailing list. And so, our job is, in this case, we looked at all 435 congressional races, and we looked at, all of the Senate races were up, and we looked at most of the governors that were running, and a great deal of mail and information and so forth, and we had to send people to find out what some of these races were. The job was sort of sorting out, and with the amount of money that was available to do this kind of thing, was to find the best place for it and try to respond to those that seemed to us to be most deserving and so forth.
Would you favor a system whereby all campaigns are financed by, through tax monies, and all candidates are given the same amount?
No, I wouldn't, Don. I, I think that the, that the system works best when people feel that they have a commitment and are really involved. I think funds to, and a good many of my friends disagree with my position on this, but I, I think that government funds or tax money, it seems to me, to give, give an equal amount, give an edge to an incumbent, simply because he's there and he has the free mail that he, the franking privilege that he has, and if you give equal amounts of money, chances are you're going to sort of cement the incumbent. And it generally takes more money to get the message across for a challenger...
To overcome the incumbents and advantages.
To overcome the edge of the incumbent. So, it seems to me that, although I do think that perhaps maybe another way to get at it would be to limit the length of time that we campaign in this country, which I think would have the effect of reducing the size of the, of the pockets needed to campaign. Plus, I think we really need to strengthen the disclosure laws of where the money comes from and how it was spent. And I think if we do those things, I have a feeling that that's, that's going to be what's needed. I really hesitate to see government get into the...
Take over every, that aspect as well.
Right. It seems to me we have a bureaucracy now, and I'm not sure that I want to add to it.
I was going to say that if you, if the monies were always there, then there would probably be a large business built around campaigns, and people, I'm sure there is, already is, at least to a certain extent. Do you find that most or a lot of candidates have volunteer organizations, or do they turn a lot to professional campaigns?
Well, some of the most successful ones this time had a volunteer organization. The governor, the new governor of Maine ran as an independent against both parties. I think his total amount of expenditures were $1,500, and he had a crew, a large volunteer organization that simply went door-to-door. And, you know, it's really, I think it restores my faith in the electorate because they are willing to get in there and do the job.
Again, it goes back to the point where you have an investment in that process. But someone like George McGovern spent over a million dollars in...
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
I think that...
Maybe because they had it.
I think that that's, I'm sure that probably the money was there for George McGovern, but I think that the heavy reliance on large amounts of money seems to me to at least inhibit, if not prohibit, a number of people running for public office. You either have to have money, or you have to be able to get money. And for those few that won without it this time, it, they demonstrated that they had a very well-organized campaign, volunteers. I think that's what's, you know, if I, I guess if we didn't have to spend so much money, it's...